Has approved eighteen solar projects on almost five thousand acres of land that environmental groups say is classified as special agricultural reserve and specially protected rustic land. Ruth Santiago is a community and environmental lawyer who's part of the legal team in the case. She joins us now from Salinas, Puerto Rico. Ruth, welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
So Ruth, environmental groups are suing over solar power. I have to say this seems a little counterintuitive on first blush, but before we get into why you're suing, could you describe the solar projects that we're talking about? Because I understand that where you are there in Salinas, they're already building the biggest installation. What is it like?
So the project that's being built here, utility scale renewable energy solar project being built here in Salinas is about five hundred and some acres of land that has been totally deforested, all vegetation removed, land left bare, compacted, and the panels have been put in. And what happens is that this is agricultural land, prime agricultural land. It's also a recharge area for the south coast aquifer, the only source of potable water for all people here in Salinas. And the way that they build these projects, the sediment, when it rains, come running into the nearby streams and down into the communities and discharges in Hobos Bay. So there are lots of issues, flooding in the community, adverse impacts to agricultural land, which is the topsoil is usually removed. So it's devastating on many, many levels.
Let me ask you specifically about, you know, the agricultural land and traditionally how that was used. What was grown there that now that you've described as kind of deforested, topsoil gone, probably won't be grown there now?
Yeah, so the prime agricultural product, especially in this area, are plantains, papayas and other fruits. Plantains are a big staple of the Puerto Rican diet also, that sometimes there's cattle grazing and hay production.
And your lawsuit says that the solar panels should instead be installed on rooftops and in parking lots and even in kind of contaminated lands, which sadly Puerto Rico does have quite a few of. Why did the Puerto Rico Energy Bureau not do that in the first place? And are they receptive to doing that?
We have, many groups included in the lawsuit, have advocated for rooftop solar, you know, solar on already built up areas especially. And the Energy Bureau unfortunately has approved the citing of most of these projects on prime agricultural land, ecologically sensitive areas, because they say they don't have jurisdiction to determine environmental issues.
So now you've filed a lawsuit to push the matter. Have you had any response from the Puerto Rican government?
No, we're awaiting some kind of filing by the agencies that were included in the lawsuit.
And what is the timeline on this project? Because it's a massive project, but once it gets underway, I imagine that land is irreparably damaged.
Yes, that's exactly our understanding. They are twenty-five year contracts that have been signed for each of these projects.
It's a long time.
And the construction phase is another couple of years or so.
And Ruth, as I understand it, Puerto Rico has to already import a large percentage of its food. Would this loss of agricultural land just make things worse?
Yeah, absolutely. Puerto Rico imports about eighty-five percent of the food that's consumed locally. So we need to preserve the agricultural land in order to have the ability to produce food because oftentimes during hurricanes, the ports are closed, imports are hard to bring in the food that's necessary. And so we really need to preserve that agricultural land and use it to provide food for the population.
So what is the next step, Ruth?
So we hope that the court will listen and order the Energy Bureau and the other agencies involved to take a hard look and determine which are the appropriate areas for the citing of these projects. And moreover, to emphasize that with all the built up space that we have, as the Department of Energy, U.S. Department of Energy noted in a recent study, Puerto Rico has four to five times the rooftop solar potential compared to its entire energy demand. And so to gear these larger renewable energy projects towards those areas on rooftops and parking lots, there are studies that say that that's where Puerto Rico should install these renewable energy projects.
Ruth Santiago is a community and environmental lawyer in Puerto Rico. Thank you so much, Ruth.
My pleasure. Thank you.
And Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Deepa Fernandez in Alameda, California.
And I'm Celeste Headley in Washington, D.C. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from WBUR Boston and from BetterHelp, committed to supporting mental health through therapy. Clients are matched with one of 25,000 therapists and can communicate via video, chat, or phone at betterhealth.com-public.
And here's the tricky thing again for Ron DeSantis in this poll and why it had so little good news for him. It really showed a tough pathway for Ron DeSantis, that his issues weren't resonating. And even among the voters who cared about the particular issues he's focused on, he wasn't winning those voters either.
I'm Michael Barbaro. That's today on The Daily from the New York Times.
Tune in for the daily weekdays at 6:30 on Radio IQ.
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council for August the 21st, 2003, is hereby called order, and I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Volison?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds will be absent today. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Pretty?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And a quorum is present today. Our invocation will be delivered by Elder Samuel Thompson. Elder Thompson, you, okay, welcome. And he's the Associate Minister of Spirit of Life Church International, followed by prayers allegiance to the flag, and I will lead you in that. But before, before we have our invocation, I would ask you to stand with me. We want to have a moment of silence for the mother of one of our colleagues, Councilwoman Stephanie Moon Reynolds, mother, Pacola Gilliam, passed on Thursday, August the 17th. So could you join me in a moment of silence? Thank you.
Amen. Let us pray. Certainly thank God for being here. Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus. God, we thank you, Lord, that your word says wherever two or three are gathered together in your name, that there you would be in the midst. And so, God, we thank you, Lord, that there's more than two or three, oh God, so we just know that you are here in this, in the midst. God, we thank you, Lord, for our mayor, Mayor Lee. God, we thank you, Lord, for this city council. God, and we thank you, Lord, for providing for them personally, protection for them personally, oh God, and downloading to them health, oh God, physical health, mental health, and emotional health. God, we pray for their families. God, it's hard for them to concentrate on things for the city if their families are jacked. But God, if anybody, oh God, if there are any prodigal sons or daughters, God, we pray, Lord, that the prodigal son, the prodigal daughter would return in the mighty name of Jesus. God, we praying, Lord, that you will have customized encounters, oh God, with this staff, oh God, with this council, customized encounters, God, that they will know the truth, stand for the truth, stand for light and godly wisdom in the mighty name of Jesus. God, we pray, Lord, that you would deliver us from evil. Father, we pray that this city council will be known for its integrity, for its unity, for its cooperation, God, with internal and external sources, God, meeting the needs of the citizens of Roanoke, oh God. And we pray, Lord, that there will be cooperation, God, between city council, God, the city manager, God, the fire and rescue department, God, water and sewage sanitation departments, police department, sheriff department, oh God, our court officials, God, our judges, God, let there be unity, God, in this community with our teachers, God, these business leaders, let there be unity in the mighty name of Jesus. God, we come against egotism, oh God, and elitism. God, we come against it in the mighty name of Jesus. God, we humble ourselves before you, knowing that because of you, God, we can do great things, great things, great things for the city of Roanoke. Father, we pray, Lord, that there will be a consistent and concerted effort with the federal and state officials, regardless of political differences, such that Roanoke would be a star city for real in the country, God, and in this state, God, because of consistent concerted effort. Father, we pray, Lord, that Roanoke would be known for more than just a star up on a mountain, but we pray, Lord, that Roanoke would be known for its light, its light. God, we pray, Lord, that there will be excellence, God, excellence in education, God, excellence in housing, God, excellence in medical care, excellence in business diversity, God, excellence in business opportunities, job opportunities, God. And God, we pray, Lord, that outside businesses would be attracted to the light here in Roanoke City. God, we come against, we come against the homicidal spirit. God, a whole lot of homicide has been happening, God, and God, we come against that homicidal spirit. And God, we declare and we bind the spirits of homicide and principalities that promote darkness and spiritual witness in high places over this city. God, we pray, Lord, and we declare victory over sexual immorality, impurity, lustful pleasures, idolatry, sorcery, hostility, quarreling, jealousy, anger, outbursts of anger, selfishness, dissension, divisiveness, and envy. And God, we thank you, Lord, that we release, God, we loose in this city faith, sanctification, protection, peace, love, strength, hope, joy, victory, love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, and faithfulness, and self-control. God, we thank you, Lord, that this council, oh God, is blessed and will follow, oh God, after you and provide leadership that this city needs. We declare and speak it in Jesus' name, and we give you praise in Jesus' name. Did everybody say amen?
Amen.
I can't hear you.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose every hand is for all.
All right. Thank you, Elder. Let me note that council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. All right. Few announcements. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council opponent, authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. So I want to encourage all of you that are listening or viewing us by TV and those here that we encourage you to step forward and put in an application to work and to serve on one of our boards and commissions. It's an important part of what we do. And so we're always encouraging and we always want to have all of our citizens engaged and involved. So you can do that very easily. All you need to do is access the city's website at www.roanokeva.gov to complete an online application, or just simply call the clerk's office, and they'll walk you through that process. But we want more of our citizens to be involved on a number of boards and commissions that we have. All right. The mayor's annual State of the Cities address is on Thursday, August the 24th, 2023, at 8:00 AM at the Hotel Roanoke. There's still a few tickets left, so, okay, there's still a few tickets left. Thursday at 8:00 at the Hotel Roanoke Conference Center, the State of the Cities address, where I will be talking about where we've been, where we are, and where we hope to go in the future. So I look forward to that. And I think it's on RV TV. You can view that, at least it will be played, and you probably can review that live at 8:00 on this Thursday, August 24th. And I know you're anxious to get your tickets, so they have some available for you. All right. Okay. The next order of business is presentations and acknowledgements. And I'm going to come down to the lower podium, and I'm going to ask Susan Lauer to meet me there, and whoever you want to bring with you. Susan? I have a resolution before me honoring Susan, who is the Director of Real Estate Valuation, and who's retiring after thirty-seven years of service to the Star City. And so I have a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, could you read the resolution in its own time?
I will. A resolution recognizing and commending the services rendered to this city by Susan Lauer as its Director of Real Estate Valuation, and expressing the gratitude and appreciation of the city and its people for her service. Whereas Ms. Lauer will resign from her position with the city as Director of Real Estate Valuation effective September 1st, 2023, after serving for the past twenty years. Whereas prior to her service as Director of Real Estate Valuation, Ms. Lauer served in various supervisory positions in the Real Estate Valuation Office since 1986. Whereas Ms. Lauer has dedicated thirty-seven total years of service to the city of Roanoke. Whereas Ms. Lauer earned her undergraduate degree from East Tennessee State University in 1981 and completed an internship with the Tennessee Department of Transportation in 1980, critiquing reports for highway takings in the appraisal department. Whereas before coming to the city, Ms. Lauer spent five years in the private sector and was a key appraiser of Smith Mountain Lake, including Westlake, Bernard's Landing, Vista Point, and Waterfront Subdivision. Whereas in her role as Director of Real Estate Valuation, Ms. Lauer managed fourteen staff appraisers and forty-six thousand parcels of real estate and was responsible for the valuation of all property in the city of Roanoke. Whereas Ms. Lauer held affiliations with Virginia Commonwealth Chapter of Appraisal Institute, the Virginia Association of Assessing Officers, and the International Association of Assessing Officers for more than thirty years. Whereas Ms. Lauer held the position of President from 2010 through 2011, and is current Legislative Chairman for the Virginia Association of Assessing Officers. Whereas Ms. Lauer has served the city of Roanoke with the highest professionalism and competence, and exhibited intelligence, skill, and a strong work ethic throughout her tenure as Director of Real Estate Valuation. Therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Roanoke as follows. One, the Council adopts this resolution as its means of recognizing and commending the meritorious services rendered to the city of Roanoke and its people by Susan Lauer, Director of Real Estate Valuation, expressing the gratitude and appreciation of the city and its residents for her service. Number two, the city clerk is directed to forward an attested copy of this resolution to Susan Lauer.
All right. Awesome. I'm going to ask the council if there are any discussions or comments you have, or you want to waive that until we approve the resolution. All right, we'll waive that. We'll come back to that part. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. I am pleased and honored at this time to recognize Susan Lauer and her work and what she's done, and the microphone is all yours, and you introduce your special guest.
Okay. Thank you so much. I have a lot of special guests today. He's been a forty-two years, so he has, yeah, he looked that old, honey. And I have my three children and their spouses, and my granddaughter Maddie back here. So if y'all will stand up, and my mom, eighty-seven years old, came from Knoxville, Tennessee.
Oh. I'm just so honored and humbled by this. You know, someone special told me one time, if you choose a job you love, you never have to work a day in your life. Maddie, remember that. If you choose a job you love, you never have to work. And I have so loved being the city assessor and serving for you in this capacity and our citizens. You know, we've been together, our team, we put together a great team, and most, there's two that have served over thirty years with me of my thirty-seven. There's about five or six that are somewhere over twenty to twenty-five years with me, and then the rest are somewhere between ten and nineteen years. So when you serve together and work for the mission of assessing the property in the city of Roanoke, you become family. And this team that we have put together is like family to me, and I am going to miss them terribly. But I'm here to tell you, you're going to be in great hands because they're really good. And then the second thing I wanted to share with you, because we assess all the property in the city of Roanoke, I get to work with so many departments. You know, some departments get to come to work and work with their team, and then they go home, but not us. We work with so many departments, and, you know, on the second floor, we were kind of known as that revenue team. And so Evelyn?
Are you here? There you are. I have loved working with you and your team.
And all the great things that we do together, because sometimes people aren't happy with me and Evelyn. But we manage to get a smile on their face sometimes, and, you know, we really try to serve our citizens to the best that we can. And then Ryan, is Ryan here? Sure. You know, Ryan's team, I worked with him also on lots of different things, and he's just been wonderful to work for. Building permits and planning and development and all of the things, you know, when you, these new developers get permits, and they sometimes have fun and sometimes they don't, you know? And we get to hear, and we're the boots in the field with all this. And I love working with the permitting people. Department of Technology, can you imagine not having our city's GIS and real estate data? You know, that was something that we put together with technology and the engineering and the GIS team, and, you know, we just get, we get four million hits a month on that. Brenda Hamilton's office, the clerk of court, we work with the Deeds, we work with the Platts, we work with all those people all the time. Economic Development, when they come in and want to see some property, or Mark's team calls us and says, can you help us project this? You know, of course we can. That's what we do. Our judges, you know, we have a Board of Equalization, and we've worked with all of our judges. Our attorney's office keeps us out of trouble. Thank you for that. And then last but not least is the finance team in the city manager's office. You know, I have so loved working with all of those folks, and we are working together to make Roanoke better. But lastly, I want to share with you one of the most, you know, when you think about thirty-seven years, I have watched the city grow. And I remember calling my mom and dad in Knoxville and saying, Mom, you know, these people think this is a mall, this is before Valley View, and they don't know what a mall is. And they think Virginia Tech is a football team, you know? And they hadn't seen, you know, Tennessee football. But all of that has changed. I mean, you know, we have a regional mall, we have a vibrant downtown. We built a new air traffic control at the airport, and we got to go measure it, and it was really cool. You know, we, all these apartments downtown, all of the developers that we've worked so closely with, you know, I counted all joy. It really was joy. And I just really appreciate this journey and you allowing me to be your city assessor. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Members of council, any comments?
I would like to say something, Mayor, but I want the traditional photo before we get, before we lose track of things.
We should put an X around.
Yes, thank you. You're not going to get in there. There we are. There we are. And I usually give you a count so you can smile a little bit. One, two, three. One, two, and three. Thank you.
You want to go first? Oh, I'll go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Susan, I want to say congratulations, and that resolution said it all. You have seen a lot, and you've certainly done a lot. And I know we're going to be left in good hands. I know you have an awesome staff. I know Casey Bratton personally, I've known him for years, so I know they will do well. But they will miss you, and they will call. So if you see an 853 number, don't answer.
No, no. Let me see, what do I tell you?
Seven miles away.
I'm seven miles away. I've been telling him this, don't worry, I'm seven miles away.
Don't do it. Don't do it.
Don't do it, don't do it. But anyway, thank you so much for your service to Roanoke City.
Susan, thank you. It's been an absolute delight to work with you and you really conveyed, I think, the power of creating a wonderful working environment. When you described the longevity of people that are in your department, they're there because they feel welcomed there. They were hired to do something that you could see in them, that HR could see in them, was their passion. And as you said, when you love your work, even through the challenging times, you keep showing up. And I can tell you love your family too, which means that this transition is going to be made all the easier because you have a loving family that can't wait to see you, especially all your grandkids. So thank you for amazing work for our city and you've left quite a legacy and we're all grateful for it.
Thank you very much.
Is there a deadline where we can send residents to appeal on your resignation?
It's over, sorry.
That's another thing to talk about. But thank you for your service to the city, as I heard how long that resolution was. And saw how small the font was in order for them to get it on one page for you. I do have one question though. So are you going to continue as a Legislative Chairperson or does that role change over for the next year?
No, I can't. But I feel like, you know, I'm not sure. I haven't made, they're all calling me all over the state, like, "Please do this." But I feel like because I won't be here in the city, I won't be on the pulse of it. So, you know, I will certainly serve on the committee if I choose not to be the chair. It's a pretty big job to be the chair because you have to go through 3,168 House bills and Senate bills. So in January, there's kind of a big thing that happens in January. January 2nd is when we announce our projections for the real estate. So anyway, I won't have that bothering me anymore.
Well, thank you for your service to the city. Thank you for your service there.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Ms. Susan, thank you so much for your passion, for your job. I mean, it's not a job, it's your life. So thank you very much to you and to your family as well. Thank you.
Susan, thank you so much for everything that you've done. I didn't realize just how long you had been here until I heard the year 1986. And I think that's when I became a resident of Roanoke.
Oh, my goodness.
So thank you for everything you've done over these years. And I know that Casey and the team will pick up right where you were because of the great team that you've created. And, you know, that shows every year with our assessments and how well those go every year. So I really appreciate you for your service.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, your staff, for what you've done. And when I think about the Star City, All-American City, and people moving back in Roanoke, you in a way are responsible for a lot of that. We appreciate you and appreciate your ability to work with people. As you say, you go across the line in terms of directors and programs and organizations throughout the city. And it takes a special person to do that, a special person. And so you're that person. So we're going to miss you, but thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, we're going down to the next item now. And Madam Clerk, is that hearing of citizens?
Yes, it is.
Upon public matters, City Council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the City Manager for response, recommendation, or report to Council as he may deem appropriate. Do we have any speakers to sign up?
We do. We have five speakers.
Okay. You may call them in the order of their signing up.
Okay. My first speaker is Joseph Brozowski.
First time doing this for myself, but good afternoon, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, City Manager and City Council. My name is Joseph Brozowski and I am actually the owner of You Sell to Us and Urban Reblocked here in Roanoke, Virginia. I am here to give my support for the Climate Action Plan that you guys spoke about last City Council meeting. I've worked with LeAnn quite a bit on the waste side of things and I understand how difficult that can be nowadays. Biggest thing that we are looking to do with Urban Reblocked is we are working on developing a program and a machine that will turn the plastics into building material. And that's something that can make a huge dent on the waste that the city produces, not only for municipality, for businesses, for residences, for everybody. So that's even more important to get this, to get the measure passed for the Climate Action Plan and to get some funding into it because I can't do it on my own. I mean, I'm only one person. It will bring jobs, it will bring revenue to the city, but I need help to build it. I've got a great team behind me, but in order to get this to work, we got to get city involvement. I've personally been to RDS and I've seen how much plastic that was recycled in Good Faith gets thrown in the trash. And I know how many thousands of dollars that actually costs the city every month for RDS to dispose of that. And it's just going straight into the landfill. So with our program, and I'm happy to answer any questions now or later, we would be able to divert hopefully all of that plastic from even touching RDS and go indirectly to our facility and turning that into usable building materials. And that can be used in any sorts of construction, from the heat issues that we have in the city for putting benches with shade over top of it just out of recycled plastics. We can do almost anything with it. So that is, I'm just here today in support of that measure, that resolution, that the Climate Action Plan be accepted and get some funding in on it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Vice Mayor. Thank you for being here and for starting this company. Just two questions. Do you, is this all kinds of plastics? Are you limited?
All of them.
All of them?
And they don't have to be sorted.
Okay. And then Ms. Sanchez Jones and I were at a ribbon cutting for a pollinator native garden earlier and there was a bench there that was made out of plastics. Was that your company?
That's not us, that's Trex. We actually, we're the local drop off facility for Trex too.
Okay. So you're connected to that?
Yes, yeah. I know them very well.
And are able to do that kind of work?
Yep, yep.
That's fantastic.
So, yeah, that's all the plastic film that's been formed into those benches. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor. Mine's less of a question for you, more for Bob to be an announcement to you. Thank you for coming today to show up in support of it. At that meeting, Council took action to refer this to the Planning Commission so it'd be incorporated to the comprehensive plan. And I just wasn't sure if that's yet been scheduled, just to make sure you know so you can send your comments there.
Yes.
It has not yet. So the Planning Commission, at that meeting, we talked about possibly going to Planning Commission in September and back here in October. And that's still a possibility. Planning Commission though is evaluating what changes might need to be made to the current document in order to actually incorporate it into the comprehensive plan. So soon we should know the answer to that. Right now, it's kind of the track we're still working on, but it'll probably be a little bit later than that, I think.
Yeah, okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Shelley Himmel.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, we'll be as brief as possible. I'm speaking on behalf of the public in regard to the Fishburne Contract, which will be coming up, I believe, later this evening, but I was unable to download an agenda and determine that that was the case. But the parties to the Fishburne Contract, both on the city's side and the applicants, have constantly stressed the critical nature of the applicant's commitment to renovation of the building on the tract. And the parties have apparently stayed with that commitment. As late as March 27th, applicants stated unconditionally, "The historic caretaker's cottage is badly deteriorate," which is badly deteriorated, "will be renovated and preserved, full stop, no conditions." Then, on June 23rd, applicants filed an amended application, which announces that they need, they now need an engineering evaluation of the property and that the building will be renovated if found to be structurally sound. This is a 180-degree turn from their previous position and their previous commitment. Yes, they did have a contract duty to carry out due diligence inspections, including engineering studies of the property, which should have been completed by April. But whether they did or not conduct these, now they want to carry out a further engineering study. And I urge the commission to allow them to do this. But in the process, you should table their application until that application, until that engineering study is completed and copies have been furnished to the city. Because you cannot get the property back once you've given it away. And you need to know whether applicants are committing to actually renovate the property or whether in the end it's just going to be demolished, which they have the right to do under the contract. So I urge the city to consider allowing applicants to have extra time to carry out this engineering study and then to require them to furnish copies to the commission, to the Council, and to all of the city departments involved, and that the results of that study be made public. Because the taxpayers deserve to know what they're getting as a result of this contract. And if it's demolition of the building, that needs to be rethought. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify for the public's sake, this is a fiction that's I've heard here recently. Part of the contract and indeed part of the deed that would convey the property requires that it's going to be, the property's going to be renovated. In fact, part of the plan is to utilize historic tax credits to renovate the property. That's what's been done. So it's going to be within the deed. This is still the agreement in there. They are doing some engineering studies and went in and looked at the foundation here recently. And tonight, when it comes up, I believe Mr. Reif will be here and be able to inform Council and the public on the status of that. So, but I just wanted to clear up that one fiction that it's going to be torn down. It cannot be torn down unless this Council specifically authorizes it.
Thank you. May I respond? The contract actually says that applicant will not demolish the building without the city's approval. And it's not the City Council. The City Council is not involved. It's the city, which is specifically any officer of the city who is entitled to sign a contract.
No, ma'am.
There is nothing in the contract about the City Council.
No, ma'am. Council speaks for the city.
So does the city manager.
That is the law. No, ma'am. Council has spoken for the city.
In any case, what are you going to do if the engineering study says that this building cannot be salvaged? Are you still going to give away the tract to someone who is not going to spend money to preserve the building? You need to know what is going to happen to that building. That's, I mean, preservation of the building was the whole point, as I understood it, of the contract to begin with. So, that said.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Willby Cathcart.
Madam Clerk, before we go to this particular, I didn't get her name, the man, the lady's name.
Shelley, Shelley Himmel.
Dwayne Nealon, a retired member of the American Institute of Certified Planner, is unable to be here today to speak publicly about his recommendation to not approve the zoning application. He has valuable experience as a former urban planner. When he retired, he moved to the Fishburne, to the Raleigh Court neighborhood and frequently hikes through Fishburne Park. He was attracted to move to Roanoke because of the notable urban planner, John Nolan, influenced the early development of Roanoke City and the wise protection of natural resources like Fishburne Park. He sent you a detailed submission with labeled photographs contrasting Fishburne Park's neighborhood with the Wassena neighborhood. It's easy to read and understand why Fishburne Park isn't appropriate for commercial development. From his report, "The introduction of commercial development in Fishburne Park would be detrimental and extremely inappropriate. The city of Roanoke cannot afford to diminish any parkland in its possession, especially the prime section of Fishburne Park containing a vital accessible pocket, open green space, a private peaceful 1.1 acre parcel. Virginia, Fishburne Park is surrounded by low-density residential land use. With the exception of the Corina Clinic Park View Health Facility, Educational Institutions, and Blue Ridge PBS, there are no other non-residential uses for an extended radius beyond the surrounding neighborhoods. The actual building site is environmentally sensitive because of the narrow ridge and sloping contours are prone to erosion and runoff, leading to a nearby stream. In stark contrast to the Fishburne Park site proposal, the Green Goat is an excellent example of appropriate adaptive reuse. The Green Goat land use is completely compatible with the existing commercial land uses of this neighborhood and will no doubt contribute to the success of this commercially mixed neighborhood." He concludes with this recommendation. "The existing building is 130-plus years old, maintenance has been neglected, and the physical condition is extremely deteriorated. The 1.1 acre parcel does not create a significant cost burn with regard to the city continuing to provide milling and the ground maintenance. The building can be restored and adaptive reuse created that is more attuned to the primary open space and park purpose. One approach would be to publish an open request for proposals to the community so existing proposals would, that would restore and maintain the building using private resources and public grants, retain public ownership, and preserve the open green space of this park area, and create a plan for the building that assures compatible, long-term public use and stable and safe operation of the building." Thank you.
The next speaker is Owen McGuire.
Mr. Mayor, members of Council, thank you. I'm Owen McGuire. I've lived next to Fishburne Park for 39 years. Back in 2016, over 600 people signed a petition objecting to the sale of the house and the land. The neighborhood meeting, with a large turnout, voted unanimously to object to selling the house and the land. This past spring, over 1,000 people signed a paper petition with over 200 of those people from our neighborhood objecting to the 1.1 acre being rezoned commercial and sold for only $10. Back in 2017, city leaders began to take a hard look at what to do with the caretaker's cottage. Councilman John Garland took a special interest in the cottage. Mr. Garland has done many renovations to historic properties in the Roanoke area. Mr. Garland did a free study of the cottage through his Spectrum Design Group. Eventually, a city employee entered into a contract with the city to purchase the cottage and about .5 acres of land to be used as a residence. However, the buyer backed out in the 11th hour because they were not prepared, just as like the current developers appear to be unprepared. The sale of 1.1 acres of valuable parkland for $10 in exchange for a historic building to be restored, but there's no protection now that the house will be restored. The new zoning clause, there were two new zoning clauses, one to .5 acres. They say it's going to be treated as recreational open space, however, it's going to be zoned commercial. Doesn't make any sense. It's just another confusing clause they put in there, as is the first refusal right for the city to purchase the property back, which everyone knows that the city would never purchase the property back. Anyway, but the most disturbing clause is the historic, quote, "The historic caretaker's cottage, which is badly deteriorated, will be renovated and preserved if, if found to be structurally sound." Well, this just, it's just another confusing Well, this just- it's just another confusing way. Why do they put that in there at the 11th hour now, on the second application? Why wasn't that put in there before? They've had almost two years to go in there and to get their studies done through architectural and engineering companies. They've had plenty of time. Why would they insert a clause like that? Anyway, the contract also contains the intention of them to- to be a coffee shop. However, it looks more and more like they're- they actually want to have an eating and drinking establishment, which means sale of beer, wine, or other alcoholic beverages. For these reasons, and for many more, I would ask that you table that or reject the proposal this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Frida Cathcart.
I'm here in my capacity. It's the Soil and Water Conservation District Director, and I wanted to let you know that today I sent you an invitation to the farm tour, the Roanoke City and County Farm Tour. The RSV is due this Wednesday, so I invite you all to check that out and to share it with others. It's a really fun time. I wanted to thank you for voting to move forward with adding the Climate Action Plan to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. It's really important to take the time to get that right and to integrate it. And land use is the reason why, like they were saying, like you need to know how to use land use. This is from a 2013 article, I mean, sorry, 2019 article, about 100 experts issued dire warning about urban sprawl's impact on climate change. From the article, Kelly Levine, a senior associate with the World Resources Institute's climate- Global Climate Program, said, "We know the way we are using land right now is worsening climate change and exacerbating our inability to meet sustainable development goals. Cities have a role to play in leading by example and living sustainably on a smaller footprint and showing how expansions can be done prudently." End of quote. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Still goes on. "Limiting the urban impact on surrounding land will require policies that limit sprawl and promote housing density, packing more people into smaller urban spaces." These land use- so separate from the article, "These land use policies are important to respond to climate change to promote resilience to extreme weather events." Now, I serve on the Soil and Water Conservation Board. It's an independent government body. That's a- our district is a regional independent body. I'm elected official. And one of the things that we're responsible for are the dams. We have a dam committee, D-A-M. And it's really important, and when I come here and I'm telling you about things that could impact that stress on the dams, it's serious. There are reasons why. There's state and federal money pouring in to our district board to get out to the localities to respond to extreme weather events, because we know the impending disasters are coming. We don't know exactly where they are, so we have to be ready everywhere for that. And that means having resiliency. And we provide the support for local governments, businesses, and individuals to deal with these problems proactively. We're the solution people. We're not a regulatory agency. I wanted to let you know, as far as I know, and I heard from Michael Clark today, that no funds were applied for, for the Virginia Land Conservation Fund. And that's very disappointing, because not only does that mean we're not getting money coming here to solve problems that we need to solve here in Roanoke, but we're not- which have to do with the environment, but we're not getting the economic stimulus from it either of bringing those dollars home, potentially millions. So I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention about being aware, when I come up and I'm talking about things like flood resiliency and how things happen, there's a big impact, and we have a responsibility. And I'm going to take this to the General Assembly, because we are a Dillon State, and it's really important that if localities aren't responding in the necessary way, that the General Assembly responds. Because I've been seeing things recently that cause me grave concern about decisions that are making, that are causing improper impacts on stress in these areas, and that's my responsibility to the constituents downstream to protect them. And we're talking like potentially thousands or hundreds of thousands of people, depending on what happens. So I'm deadly serious when it comes to these things. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask the city manager, I just want to make sure that Ms. Cathcart's statement is accurate, that we did not apply for that grant.
That's correct. When we asked the Parks Department to take a look at the grant applications, and as Ms. Cathcart has stated, Michael provided her with a reasoning as to why ultimately they decided that that funding was not the appropriate funding mechanism. Doesn't mean that they're not applying for other funding mechanisms to deal with some of the same issues, but that particular funding was not, and I'll follow up with council on.
Oh, okay.
A deeper explanation of that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that I would like to hear why we did not.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I get nervous speaking, so like when I'm done, like I take off.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cathcart. I just wanted to- I just wanted to know from the city manager since we did not.
I'm always available for questions.
Okay.
All right. Does that conclude?
Yes, that's all the speakers.
All right. We're going to go to our next item, is the consent agenda. Oh, pardon me.
Never mind.
She's taken off.
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I want to call your attention to two requests for closed meetings from councilmember White Boyd and the city attorney, to discuss a personnel matter, being the annual performance- performances of the council-appointed officers pursuant to Section 2.2, that's 3711 Code of Virginia, as amended, and item number two, to consult with legal counsel regarding current litigation, for such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely- would adversely affect the negotiating or litigation posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, that's 3711 Code of Virginia, as amended. But I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Move this consent agenda.
Second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. All right, next item on a regular agenda is the reports of city officers and comments from the city manager, and our city manager will introduce us to the briefing.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have one briefing today. This is the monthly briefing regarding the budget performance to date, so this will be the July monthly budget report. Again, this has been provided to you, and Brent will walk you through that, so you get to find that. It's very tricky.
Somebody's going to have to.
It's just public. It's just public.
You what? Just public?
It's just public, yeah. So it's very tricky.
Oh, yeah. I wouldn't pay attention to you.
Good afternoon, council members, and vice mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be with you here today, and it took me longer to get this up for you than it probably should take for me to review it, if I can get it to move. It's just not working out for me today. Let's try this. Here we go. The monthly report, this is one of the probably more uninteresting months of the year. The first month, as far as financial reporting, this is the first month of our new fiscal year. As you see, it wasn't quite closed yet for some of the year-end activities that are going on, and really, the year-end activities become all-encompassing for the next several months. If you'll look in the fiscal '24 actual year-to-date column, you'll see some numbers that look a little random, and quite frankly, we're in a period right now where a lot of collections that were done in July actually apply back to the previous fiscal year. So many of these will be accrued back to the prior fiscal years that was for that year, and new ones will be accrued over the next several months as that information and documentation becomes available to the city to make those entries. So it's- my report today would say things are good, but busy in the finance area. Revenues are holding well, as far as we can tell right now, as the final, I think we're in the- about the final 30 days or so of accrual of revenues from the state and some of our other vendors that may be sending money our way. So really, there's really not much to report on the revenue. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have concerning the report as presented right now, and if not, I will move over to the expenditures, which have much the same explanation. However, not quite as complicated, and there's a couple that I really would just like to point out. If you'll go halfway down the sheet into the public works line, as you go across, you'll see we've 32% spent in the first month of the year, and some of that will actually be classified back into the prior year for some of the work that was done. But that is primarily due to public works paving schedule and the paving season they're in, with a great deal of purchasing, a lot of activity going on. So they are there, and you see the public safety at 9.1% and general government at 12.8%. Once again, a lot of upfront costs at the beginning of the year, that they were waiting to get money for capital, some things like that. So nothing out of the ordinary yet this year, thankfully. And once again, I'd be happy to take any questions you have. And if you have none, that would conclude my report today. So thank you very much for having me. Have a good rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Try not to tear anything up as I leave.
So that concludes our briefing?
That is, yes, thank you.
All right, we're now down to items recommended for action. Item A is an approv- approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Roanoke and George Mason University for funds to be used for the Roanoke Regional Small Business Development Center. Adopt a budget ordinance to appropriate the SBDC, which is a Small Business Development Center, remaining funds for this year, and adopt an ordinance amending Section 22.3-2 of the city code defining that the director and all employees working for the SBDC are not eligible to participate in the city's retirement system. There is, with three measures, the first one is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of funds from George Mason University, approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Roanoke and George Mason University, authorizing the execution of necessary documents upon certain terms and conditions, authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute such MOU, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to take such further action as may be necessary to implement and comply with such MOU.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by members of council?
If I can briefly explain kind of what we're doing here. So after a number of years of stewardship of this program through the Regional Chamber of Commerce, the size of the program, and really their desire to expand, requires a larger fiscal host, which we're able to accommodate. And the reason for that is all of their funding is done through reimbursement, and so in order to do the projects that they wish to do, you have to have the money upfront and then seek that reimbursement from a variety of partners. Real quickly, the Small Business Development Center is organized and funded in a very unusual way, in that it is a predominantly a combination of funding that comes from the Small Business Administration at the federal level, which is actually appropriated by- directly by Congress. In addition to that funding, there is funding provided by a number of the localities in our region. We are one of those localities that have provided funding for years as a part of that program. The program is actually contracted between the Small Business Administration and George Mason University, and so George Mason University is actually the statewide provider of the Small Business Development Center, but then each center in the region is man- is hosted by a different entity. We are, in this case, becoming that entity. So we're the fiscal host, which simply means that we receive those reimbursements as we move forward. They are our employees, just as they have previously been the employees of the chamber, so that's transitioning over as we move forward. It is based on an annual contract, and that's because annually they find out what funding they receive from Congress, and so it has to be revisited each year. They're on a calendar year, which is why we see your information. It ends kind of December, and so they'll have a new agreement with us in January for that as well. So it's obviously a vital important- a vital project, a vital initiative in our area. The majority of the clients that are actually served by Small Business Development Center come from the city of Roanoke. However, our partners in this effort do have staff in both Christiansburg as well as in Bonnetot County, so it is a regional facility, and again, will serve as their fiscal host, much as we do with other entities, such as the Workforce Development Board also. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. All right. Any more discussion? Any discussion by council members? Hang on. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. We have an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and reordaining Section 22.3-2, definitions, chapter 22-22.3, pensions and retirement, Article 1, General Code of the City of Roanoke, as amended, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Vice Mayor.
Bob, do we have folks here from the Small Business Development Center?
I'd let you know.
Not really, so.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we did, but I just- I'm excited about this. I've been a longtime appreciator of their work, and I know it's regional, but it's making a big difference in the city, so I'm glad we can enter into this partnership with them.
Yeah, and I should have mentioned in the earlier briefing, in addition to the offices that are maintained in Christiansburg as well as in Bonnetot County, their principal office will be hosting at One Jefferson, and so they're already in the process of moving in. Once this goes into effect at the 1st of September, you'll be entering their building off of Jefferson, and we'll actually have- working on another partner that'll be in that building also, but- so they'll actually be physically moving from the Chamber of Commerce to One Jefferson.
All right. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. All right, we have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from George Mason University, neighboring localities and other corporate supporters for the Roanoke Regional Small Business Development Center, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 grants, grant and general appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Is there any discussion by members of council? Hang on. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item B is the acceptance of funds from Roanoke County for the shared installation cost of regional gateway signs. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance appropriating funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Is there any discussion? All right, Vice Mayor.
Peace.
This is switched on. That's wrong. Excuse me.
This is switched on, that's wrong. Excuse me just one minute. Tim, on that measure, it has the funding from the Department of Transportation, but this funding is actually coming from Roanoke County. So I don't think that that is accurate in that measure.
Budget ordinances are done by finance.
Yeah, so I don't know.
It didn't come through our office.
So I don't know. Mayor, if we can table it till at least the seven o'clock meeting this evening, then we can work that piece out. So I believe that it's written incorrect there, and it actually should be coming from Roanoke County, but I need to work with finance to make certain that we can do that.
All right, we'll table that. Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes, a simple motion of the boys' vote should do it. Motion to table till seven p.m. meeting tonight or whatever later time of which it's finally ready.
Second.
Is that settled?
Yeah.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you call a rule on that?
Yes, sir. Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
All right, aye.
Okay.
So we will table this until tonight.
Yeah, if we can bring it back this evening and have it resolved, we will. Otherwise, we'll bring it at the next meeting. So thank you.
All right. Item C is the acceptance of FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, Virginia Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Program funds. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the Virginia Department of Transportation's Highway Safety Improvement Program funds from FY twenty-three through FY twenty-four and authorizing the execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right. Any discussion by members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call a rule.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. All right, there's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance appropriating funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 capital projects fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call a rule.
Did we get a motion on that one? Who gave the motion?
Mr. Pretty. Mr. Volason seconded.
I did not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item number D is the acceptance of Safe Streets and Roads for All Discretionary Grant Program Action Plan Grant from the United States Department of Transportation. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Are we on D?
Yeah.
Okay. So Mr. Pretty made the motion, who's second?
I didn't.
No. I think Mr. Volason made the motion.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah.
We're going fast today.
I know, I think we're getting excited.
Oh, what? What's the say? Oh, okay. Because I missed it, the rest went.
Okay. I'll read the resolution.
All right.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the DOT SS four A dash FY twenty-two dash O one, Safe Streets and Roads for All Discretionary Grant Program Action Plan Grant for the Office of the Secretary of Transportation, U.S. Department of Transportation, and authorizing execution of any required documentations on behalf of the city.
All right, any discussion by members of council?
Mayor, if I may, just again, just kind of quick briefing on what this is. This, we had shared with you some weeks, if not months ago, that we had applied for and secured funding through the Department of Transportation, through a competitive program. So this is actually a $600,000 program, of which slightly more than $400,000 is coming from USDOT, and then the rest is coming from our match for it. But this is what will be used over the next couple of years to develop out our Vision Zero Plan, which of course is an effort to move forward on improving pedestrian and bicycle, predominantly pedestrian, but pedestrian bicycle, safety in and around our roadways. So this will be the beginning of that, and we'll be working on it for quite some time with it, and was a significant award on that project. So thank you.
All right. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
What is this money to be used to help for, like, dividers for lanes?
It's actually initially going to be used for the plan for it, and then depending what comes out of that plan, it'll be used to actually implement some of the measures. And there's a wide diversity of what those measures could be. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, call a rule.
Yes. Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance appropriating funding from the Office of the Secretary of Transportation, U.S. Department of Transportation for Safe Streets and Roads and All Grant, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call a rule.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, the budget ordinance passes. Thank you all. Item number E is a request for encroachment permit for Greater Roanoke Transit Company slash Valley Metro, GRTC, bus shelter located at Blue Hills Drive at Blue Hills Circle in the right-of-way at nineteen thirty-five Blue Hills Drive Northeast. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance allowing a bus shelter encroachment requested by the Greater Roanoke Transit Company doing business as Valley Metro into the public right-of-way adjacent to property located at nineteen thirty-five Blue Hills Drive Northeast, bearing official tax map number seven two four oh one oh two, which bus shelter will be located within the city right-of-way upon certain terms and conditions and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, any questions from council?
I have a question.
Mr. Pretty?
Just from looking at the map, and I'm glad that we'll end up having a bus shelter there, but especially with it being right-of-way. Is there any way we can get like a small tree there too for shade?
The shelter will provide some shade with it, because it actually will be a shelter, not just a bench or anything. But I will ask, I don't know.
Okay, maybe it's just in that five feet between there and the road, or who knows? But something to just help out a little bit more than maybe the shelter can. But thank you.
It's right between two trees, maybe that would help.
We'll probably end up cutting him down to put the shelter in. I don't know whether that'll be true or not, but I would hate to say that it wouldn't be.
No cutting trees, you know.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call a rule.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item F is a request for encroachment permit for Greater Roanoke Transit Company, Valley Metro, GRTC, bus shelter located at Blue Hills Drive at Blue Hills Circle in the right-of-way adjacent to seventeen fifty-one Blue Hills Drive Northeast, approximately one hundred and eight feet east of Blue Hills Circle. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance allowing a bus shelter encroachment requested by the Greater Roanoke Transit Company doing business as Valley Metro into the public right-of-way adjacent to property located at seventeen fifty-one Blue Hills Drive Northeast, bearing official tax map number seven two one oh one oh one, which bus shelter will be located within the city right-of-way upon certain terms and conditions and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call a rule.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item G is the execution of an agreement with Roanoke Emergency Medical Services Incorporated. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to enter into an agreement between the city of Roanoke and the Roanoke Emergency Medical Services, Inc., to provide the continuation of volunteer staffing for emergency care to the citizens of Roanoke and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call a rule.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for any comments that he may have.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And if I could have Jennifer Oaks, please, come up here, and anyone else she wants to bring with her as well. So they've been very patient waiting for this. So, Mr. Mayor and Council, as Jennifer comes up here, Jennifer is the Family Services Supervisor of Adult Protective Services here with the city. And several months ago, she was nominated for the 2023 National Adult Protective Service Association Collaboration Award, and she is the winner of that award. She will be traveling. Jennifer will be traveling next week to Boston where she'll accept the award. The award is given in recognition of significant contribution to the growth and development of the field of abusive elders and persons with disabilities or protective services through their collaborative efforts. Jennifer was nominated by Dr. Unwin with Carillion Clinic and the Center for Healthy Aging. And I'm just going to explain a little bit of what was in his application and the reason that Jennifer and her team are being recognized for this work. Dr. Unwin stated that Ms. Oaks and her team from Roanoke City APS were instrumental in establishing and promoting the success of this regional initiative in southwest Virginia. Back in 2015, Carillion Clinic launched a unique initiative to specially train home health agency professionals and the unique skills required to care for older adults and their caregivers experiencing dementia. To date, the program has cared for over 7,000 patients in southwest Virginia. The staff that are involved in those often are witnesses to self-neglect and maltreatment, and that's where the relationship obviously comes in with APS. It's estimated nationally that as many as ten percent of Americans experience that type of maltreatment. The second unique feature of the collaboration is that Carillion Home Health Program receives clinical support from a geriatric specialty clinic. And again, the effort here is assisted by both the patient and caregivers and adult protective services. And the third feature is that representatives from APS agencies attend coordination meetings between home health, Carillion's community hospitals, and regional community service boards. This dramatically reduces delays in APS investigations and improves the completeness of medical assessments and recommendations. Carillion Clinic and APS collaboration has resulted in educational opportunities for both APS and medical professionals. Carillion physicians and APS social workers recently published an article on how to collaborate with APS in the American family physician, and about the collaboration with the collaboration with Adult Protective Services was presented at the 2022 Annual Convention of the American Academy of Family Physicians. All of these accomplishments have occurred because of the passion and commitment of adult protective services and healthcare professionals. This collaboration could serve as a role model for other APS agencies and healthcare systems to adopt to enhance the care received by vulnerable older adults in our community. And finally, he concludes in the nomination letter that Jennifer's passion and leadership abilities, along with the support and dedication of her Adult Protective Services team, further exemplify the collaboration award from the National Adult Protective Services Association. And again, that's why she was selected as the winner. So just wanted to acknowledge that and have you all have the opportunity to congratulate her on that and also offer her any time to make any comments that she would wish. Thank you.
No, it's just an honor to actually serve the citizens of Roanoke, and it's an honor to be here in front of you guys. Thank you so much for taking the time and letting me introduce my team. Definitely could not do it my day-to-day without any of these, I'm sorry, female and gentlemen. So Lisa, I'm very nervous. If you want to go ahead and start introducing yourself, tell them how long you've been here, and we'll go from there. But thank you.
I'm Lisa Hobbs. I'm a senior family service specialist, and I am a newer worker, so I've been with the city since May.
I'm Landon Elmore. I'm a senior family service specialist, and I've been with APS for about two years now.
I'm Suzanne Cook. I'm a family service specialist, and I've been with the agency since the first of June.
I'm Nick Wire. I'm one of the senior family service specialists, and I've been here almost five and a half years.
I'm Kayla. I'm a family service specialist. I've been here since December.
Tegan-Anthith, a family service specialist, about a little over a year and a half.
Stacy Mills, a family service specialist, and I've been here since May.
And of course, we couldn't do this without her, but thank you guys so much. It is an honor, and I cannot wait to go and represent Roanoke City in Boston next week and hopefully do better at my speech than I did today. And also, my husband was able to come. I would not be able to do what I do, the late nights, and sometimes those beeper calls without him being so supportive. Unfortunately, my children were not able to attend. One's in Hawaii, one's in West Virginia. I've got two, better here local, but unfortunately, their agenda was a little booked. But thank you guys again very, very much, and it is a privilege to serve the citizens of Roanoke, definitely.
All right. Hold on a minute, I'm going to go to Ms. White Boyd.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer, you know, I have a home health agency, Blue Ridge Senior Services, for almost nineteen years now, and I've had to engage with APS on numerous occasions. And you know, we don't like to. It's always a sensitive issue, but every time that I've had to do that, you guys take your time and make sure you do your homework and investigations and come back with suitable resolutions for the families. And I know that's hard and it's very tedious, but like Mr. Cobb said, I mean, Mr. Kyle said, it's important that we protect our residents, and sometimes they do need that protection. And it's because of people like you that take the time and go in and investigate those inquiries. It is nervous, and I'm even nervous just talking about it, because I'm having flashbacks of incidents. Being there nineteen years, I've seen many, and it's unfortunate, but we need you in place doing what you're doing. I just want to say thank you to you and your team, and I hope that I don't have to call you ever again, but when I do, I appreciate how responsive you guys are.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want to thank you. As a chaplain of a senior community, we have to do continuing education on a regular basis, and some of that has to do with senior neglect and how seniors are, as Trish said, some of the most vulnerable, particularly if they live on their own, if they have no education on a regular basis. And some of that has to do with senior neglect and how seniors are, as Trish said, some of the most vulnerable, particularly if they live on their own, if they have no family support, if they have dementia and they're wandering or get lost. You get called into a lot of those things. So it sounds like you've got a lot of new staff who are very eager. And so I, I know that this is not easy work. It's extraordinary work. And so I want to commend you, Jennifer, for your dedication to this and for creating a really good team. And thank you all for what you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy Boston.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Mayor, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item A is the reports of committees. Item A1 is a report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs and a report of the city manager recommending a council concur in the request. Donald Caldwell is the director of accounting. He's the spokesperson. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth Federal and Private Grant from various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 grant, school grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any comments or discussion by members of council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Item A2, A2, is a report of certain authorities, boards, committees, and commissions which city council serves as liaisons or appointees. Are there any comments by members of council? All right. Hearing none. We'll move on to item number nine, which is unfinished business. Item number nine, one, is a resolution approving a revised city council travel policy. This matter was tabled at the August 7, 2023 council meeting. All right. Can I have a motion to remove it from the table?
So, second.
Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And it has been moved from the table. Now there is a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution adopting city council's travel expense budget policies, providing for an effective date.
All right. Any discussion for members of council? Hearing none.
Could we just get a summary of like what changed between last time? And then it was just what we discussed at the last meeting that was incorporated in. I believe we got highlighted version. I just, I can see the resolution online. I just couldn't see the policy. So I defined it in my email.
All right. Madam Clerk, call the rule.
Okay. Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for staying with us.
Item number 10 is introduction and consideration of ordinance and resolutions. We have none. Item number 11, a motion and miscellaneous business inquiries or comments by the mayor and all members of city council. All right. Vacancies on certain authorities, boards.
I do, I do have a question. And this is something that could relate to the discussion tonight. I'm just not sure if anything had been prepared or not. It was something that was said as related to the public hearing earlier today in Fishburne Park. Is it absolutely clear that should this, should the building be sought to be taken down, that it would come back before council for a vote? And is it, and we're certain on that? And if not, is there anything that could be prepared for tonight to make certain of that?
Absolutely certain. I will put my job on the line that it will be written in the deed itself. City council must approve.
Okay. Thank you.
But that's the understanding, because if I can just go through a little bit of the analysis real briefly. The contract was approved by city council. The amendments were approved by city council. Therefore, any changes dealing with the details of a contract approved by city council without specific authorization to the city manager will require action of city council.
And I believe that's where the, just the misconception may have come, is that because we authorize the city manager to, and you to go forward with whatever needs to be done in the contract, that it would seem as though that was being delegated as well and make sure that your understanding and this will be in the deed.
Yes. I think that there is some of that coupled with the word city.
Yes.
Just plainly, as you heard the speaker refer to.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. No vacancies on boards or committees at this time. And so, 3:27, council will, council will go into recess for closed meeting, and thereafter, we'll reconvene at 7:00 p.m. here in the chamber.